Exciting. Later in the agenda, there is a letter of support that I'm hoping that we can sign. We can take that up then.
Thanks. Coming meetings and subcommittee reports, the planning board is has a meeting on February 7. Next on the agenda, the town managers report Janet, I will turn it over to you.
I've handed you out and all my information for in your packet about new business engineering assessment. Usability study, the Island Institute application for shore up funding that Dave Petzel is applying for us. And a letter of support for Gabe McPhail, a copy of the Health Center. Main Community Foundation Health Center Endowment Fund Statement for 2021. Level sea level rise minutes from December 14. And a new picture, I'm going to picture of the new new picture, the fire department new sign that was installed on January 28. But Mert was pretty excited about. And I think he's going to be on meetings. He's going to mention about the new truck delivery, so he may pop up about that.
About to ask that question. Just about to ask that question.
It's supposed to be was going to be delivered tomorrow, but it's going to be next week. I know that because of the weather. And then he's got a, he's planning a dedication and he will share that information with us.
Forgot about the mask, my apologies. Is that's it from you, Jan?
And in this warrant, you'll see a big check for $172,000 that pays for the balance of the truck.
And that's coming out of capital reserve?
Correct. Yeah, Mert will hand you the check and I'm getting the check from our harbor trust bank.
This is at the ceremony?
Well, he'll give it to the gentleman when the guy leaves. Yeah. So that is it for me.
Great. Any questions before we move on? Hearing none. On to old business, an update on health and safety project. We have a letter here from Lauren to the members of the the ad hoc committee. And Lauren, I guess I'll just turn it over to you for the update.
All right, as many of you know, but not everyone in the audience. Last week Janet spoke with Amanda Austin, who is the lead architect that we've been dealing with for with two A architects. And this is in regard to the contract we have with them for working on the health and safety building. So in regard to her contract, Amanda expressed in her email that her firms has serious reservations about continuing to work on the project. A quote from them is that they came to the realization that this would be a new facility type. And the learning curve with respect to regulations would be a steep one. In a later email, two A offered to end the contract with no cost at all to the town. Janet accepted two A's offer and she's now in the process of terminating the contract with two A Architects. Janet, do you want to add anything to what I've just said?
Not really. I will after the board meets and makes their. Motion to do this, I will talk with her tomorrow and I will send her this. And the other thing I might ask her if she would like to share with us. Her notes from her work and she may or she may not, and I would pass those on to the new architect, but it's not. Not necessary, but.
It sounds like despite agreeing to take on this project, it wasn't something within their wheelhouse and it was going to be. I take them a considerable amount of time to get up to speed and perhaps not be the best. And that's coming from two way architects. So it does seem like it makes more sense to move to an architect that has experience with this, like a rural health facility. So with that, we do have a draft letter here. To Amanda of two A Architects.
That Sally, our attorney.
Right, essentially memorializing the the cancellation of the contract, which would. I think is is a good next step, and I would entertain a motion to approve the termination of the contract and the the letter. From Janet, you're the one who sent it signing this, right?
Correct.
From from the town manager to two A Architects.
So moved.
Moved by by Lauren, second by Shay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor Shay.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Elsa, but I, it is unanimous that. Please proceed Janet as as outlined.
I know that we that it sounded like there were a couple of other options that you had. We're going to approach about potentially taking over that spot. I don't know if they also would have any recommendations for folks that they are aware of in that space, but it may be worth asking.
What spot?
A new architect.
Oh.
Yeah, I know that you have a couple of folks that are have are familiar with the community. I thought for various reasons they anyway.
It certainly doesn't hurt to get if they have a recommendation for somebody, an architect who would be familiar with rural health facility.
Did you A?
Yes.
No, they did not.
Yeah.
But I have someone in the queue.
Yeah, I was thinking that you might bring that up a little bit about Steve Blatt. Because he sounds like he is interested Janet and he has a lot of experience on, well, he's got several projects that he's done on the island.
Yes, and I think once this is completed, then I will. You know, make a better connection with him, but yes, and I think, yes, he wants to do a Zoom next week, Lauren. And I think I sent an email to you, but I will follow up tomorrow with that. Well, I'm not talking to you. I was going to check with Lauren to see if it's committee.
I missed that last part, Phil.
I was just asking who we wanted to zoom with.
I'm not sure that's been decided, but certainly Gabe and me and Janet. So can I just say one more thing in closing? I actually think this change will, even though it's it's going to cause some delay. I think this is a good result and I don't know if there's any questions about that people want to ask, but that's that's my take on this.
Any questions from either the select board or those here in person or those on the call? During none, thank you very much for the update, Lauren.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is discuss the proposal from resurgence Al Hudson on Grindel Point Light Structural Assessment. We do have a proposal here in front of us. It looks like the bottom line on this is $18,000 and. I believe Dave Petzel can speak to this. Dave, are you are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, hear you well.
Yep, so this was, this is a engineering proposal from. Structural engineer who lives in Portland and he's done work on lighthouses before. And what we're seeking is some information as to the condition of the lighthouse. And the condition of the position of the. Grindel Point Light Station relative to sea level rise. And this individual is able to provide those services for us. We also had another proposal from another company that was slightly higher in cost. And but that had to do with a relocation of the lighthouse. That's from International Chimney Corporation. We chose, we decided to go with resurgence because he has worked on the burnt coat lighthouse coat lighthouse in Swan's Island. And it's almost identical to the Grindel Point Lighthouse. So that's why we decided to go with them. We had a meeting. On the 19th. Phil Seymour, Jim Mitchell, Jim Leslie, Al Hudson and Janet and myself were there and we discussed the proposal. And. Next point is that we also decided to. Seek a grant from the Island Institute to pay for approximately half of the proposal. Are there any questions?
Do we have funding in this year's budget for this or in a capital reserve account? Or is it something that would be funded by the coming budget process?
I have money right now to pay. I could pay half of this. And the other half, I believe if we received this application from Island Institute for the shore up funding, that could cover the other half of it. So that would, if that's what you want to do is get this feasibility study and then go forward and make a plan of what. Areas to work on.
If they request them just 4,000 to get started.
Well, that could be, but I think he could do the whole thing, you know, before June 30.
Well, maybe we should move on and talk about the application for shore up funding at the same time, just so we have a whole picture of what's going on. I don't, I don't necessarily, I don't know that I understand what the timing would be for the grant for shore up funding. Is this like an immediate?
I'm not, I don't know if Dave has talked with anyone or Shay has an idea. It sounds like you can apply for it all, not all the time, but there's no.
Yes, it's a rolling, rolling application and they can give us probably. A decision within a month. There is no specific deadline for the shore up grants.
I guess if we didn't receive that, we would have to wait until if you wanted to then budget in, you know, next year's budget for. Part of this, I'm not sure if I, I have any place I could search out nine or $10,000 for this.
Dave, this is Lauren. Is there a limit to the amount you can ask for or do they ask for it in terms of a match or anything like that?
The if that's to me, there there was a maximum of $10,000 and they did not require a match.
Great, thank you.
This is Jim Mitchell. I'd just like to make a comment about the lighthouse. The town acquired the lighthouse in 1933 and. Since then, has done a fairly good job of maintenance, certainly of painting the outside, painting the inside. And painting the boathouse, the fuel station and everything. Was left to take care of itself. All of these buildings will be approximately, well, the lighthouse and the keeper's house. Will be 100 years old at that time. The. Boathouse and the fuel house were built at least 50 to 60 years ago. And. I have been involved with the lighthouse for the last 25 years. The only thing that really has been done to the lighthouse is to paint the outside of the tower. Once and the. Keeper's house has been painted at least twice and even a third time. Where we replaced the clavards on the outside and put cedar clavits on. That were primed on both side because we were getting. Accelerated blistering of the paint due to its location of the keeper's house and everything. And. That's pretty much what we've done. We've never had a physical assessment, which this people will do. Of the lighthouse, the keep the keeper's house. The boathouse and the fuel station, in other words, the the whole light station that that we have. And. We don't really know what all is going on with these buildings and. I I could go into some detail on some of them, but I think it would certainly be. Well spent money to get a total assessment of of what this building needs and. And then, you know, that will kind of set our direction and future for for the physical part of the. The light station. That's the end of my talk.
Thank you very much, Jim. And I see Jennifer as her hand up Jennifer. Oh, is that just where the mouse is? Or is that a hand?
Yep, that's just the mouse.
Oh, it's just the mouse. So there is no hand up.
Yeah, that's probably, it's probably me, take the grass. Jim, I have a question for Jim. Jim, is there any federal or state money involved? These are, these facilities are basically international facility. The lighthouse and all and used for transportation from all over the planet. As guides of transportation, there must be some federal money or something involved.
I, my only thing I could tell you is once it was turned over to the town. The the Coast Guard didn't give a damn about what happened to it. And that's why. And that's why they built that auxiliary tower next to it, which was so ugly and people finally got it moved. And I'm not sure the exact. Dates and everything, but it was certainly in the 1970s to 1980s. That that erector set thing was taken down and the light was put back in the in the tower. Now, the Coast Guard does have. Some say and everything as to the light. And. And they own the light, they they put in the new light. And I think it was a cost of almost $40,000 for the new, the new light, but it's LED and it's much brighter. And. Everything else. To with the light is is Coast Guard. And certainly they would have some say whether that anything we did affect the light. Outside of that, I'm sorry, they don't care.
So we have to, we don't have to keep the light on Jim, right? We got to keep the facility up, but we don't have to keep the light on.
Well, like has set up so we can't turn off the light or do anything with the light. So that's, that's their, that's their thing. We and we have to observe. Certain rules because it is a navigational light and and they want to, you know. It keep it running as that and that's, that's about it.
Thanks and thanks. It's all I had, Jim. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. Does anybody from the select board have questions or comments about? This proposal.
So basically the proposal was such that they're going to go through and check out buildings. Find out what needs to be done. Are they going to set up a priority list and quantify or qualify each one of those?
Yes.
Items?
Yep.
Yes, yes, they will. And they'll give us a. They'll develop an opinion of. Probable rehabilitation costs, and that's what we're really looking for. As to how much it's going to cost to improve the lighthouse or restore the lighthouse, and they will provide those numbers.
Any guarantees along with that?
I bet not.
I I believe they're just probable rehabilitation costs. Those would probably change as time goes on, as we find money to to fund them. And that's why they're probably mentioned as probable rehabilit rehabilitation costs.
This will probably be the first time the lighthouse in 100 years or since 1870. Has gone through a real evaluation. Everything else has been kind of. Yeah, we got to look at this or yeah, we got to look at that. And we've never looked at the total thing. I mean. There's the L section, the attic over the L section. I personally wouldn't walk on the floor because I'm afraid of falling through. God knows what's going to happen to the boathouse. We know what's happened to the to the fuel building. So I think it's really time, if the town is interested in maintaining and keeping the lighthouse. Many towns can't find the funds and they just let the lighthouse go. And the parts of it are dismantled and everything else like that. And that's the end of it, but. I I think it's kind of an iconic thing, and I think that some of the things we're looking at. Can continue it that way and just make sure it lasts well beyond. Myself and my generation, which is pretty old. But. I think it's, I think it's well spent money.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Shay, do you have?
No, I mean, I I agree. I think it would be nice to have a professional assessment of what is needed. You know, the sea level rise committee has identified the lighthouse as kind of the key cultural. Area where we, you know, want to understand. How we can preserve it around sea level rise. So I think, you know, that fits in really nicely. My only. Kind of question and concern, I think the shore up grant is, it would be, I think the hopefully, I think. The community in general around sea level rise should take advantage of that. So I think it's a great project fit for that. I am a little bit concerned just looking at their timeline. About signing on the dotted line, if we only have half of the money right now for this year's budget, it seems as though. They would complete the project before the end of this fiscal year. And so, you know, I think it's. I think it's great, but I would be a little bit hesitant to sign the contract until we have news about whether or not we get the shore up grant.
Yeah, I think one, one possibility is a conditional approval if we were able to get the shore up funding. So we could approve this and approve the expenditure and sign the contract. If we get enough funds from the shore up grant to complete the project, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to give them a merger and then not be able to pay to complete the project. Sort of not the way the town wants to do business with with anybody.
Yes, that's my understanding also. I'm not going to sign a contract unless we have the full amount. So if the shore shore up grant doesn't come through, then we'll put it in the budget for next year. We're comfortable with that. Thank you.
Dave, are you ready to submit the grant application?
That's a very unusual question, Janet, because it already has been submitted. It was submitted by the person at the Island Institute. But we can edit the document. She did it by mistake. And so it if as long as you say you're ready to send that application off, I can contact her her. And to send it through her decision making process. I I apologize for that. I didn't send it before this meeting. She sent it before the meeting. So if there's something you want to change in there, please send it to me and I will. I will take care of mediating with the person at the Island Institute.
Well, with that explanation, I'd entertain a motion to for a conditional approval of this proposal. Conditioned on receiving the shore up funding from the Island Institute. And and enough funds essentially to satisfy the contract with the money we already have set aside, which I think Janet said was $9,000. So we need at least 9,000 from the Island Institute before we can proceed.
So moved, yeah.
Move by Shay, second by Phil. Is there any more discussion?
Well, I just got a message from Jennifer West saying that she she wonders whether historical society has any ideas for. Additional funding. Do you know that one way or the other, Dave?
We're in the process of applying to an organization that will do an assessment of the lighthouse as a museum. Not as not structurally. This is regarding all the buildings in the museum at the light station. So Patrick O'Bannon has been very helpful in identifying this organization. And we'll apply for that grant in July and they will be able to come through the museum in September.
And I think they'll probably be, this will probably be an expensive refit and there'll be opportunities down the road for collaboration with the stroke society and others, I'm sure.
Yeah, yes. Yes, there's no doubt that we're interested in collaborating with the historical society and we're also. Interested in collaborating with the Penobscot Marine Museum. To get some insights into the the artifacts and the the position of those artifacts in the regional history.
Great, thank you, Dave.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Lauren. So we do have a motion on the floor, which has been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion before we have a vote? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call Shay.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Elsa, but I, it is unanimous. There's, this proposal is conditionally approved as discussed.
To have a motion.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
If he was okay to send, like if we approve that, is that all included in that motion?
I I think it's, I think it's all included. I think we we would need to move forward with that in order to approve this proposal just for the funding sake. So I think, I think that's included, my understanding, but it's. Carry on. Next on the agenda is a proven signed letter of support for Gabe McPhail helping the town enroll in the Community Resilience Partnership Program and to apply for a community. Action grant Shay, I think this is.
Yes, so the Community Resilience Partnership Program is a state program through the governor's office of policy and the future. Climate program. Essentially, Gabe McPhail is applying to this program as a service provider where she's going to support North Haven and Islesboro. To help us jump the hurdles to get us enrolled in their program. I think I mentioned last time, there's a couple of different things that we need to do, planning processes to go through. She would help us do that and then she would act as the grant writer for us to apply for a community action grant for implementation. That's a $50,000 grant that hopefully would be submitted for us by her in their round for September. So she's just asking us for a letter of support for her grant so that hopefully she can get us money in September, so.
Great. I don't see any downside, really. Is there any discussion about that? I would entertain a motion to approve this letter, proven.
The move.
Moved by Lauren. By Melissa, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor Shay.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
Elsa, but I, it's unanimous and approved. We do have a letter here to sign, so I'll I'll circulate it. Other business, there's nothing else on the agenda, although this is an opportunity for anybody who has any other business who's here. Or on the call, I don't see Mert there to talk about. Mert is there? Oh, Mert is there. Mert, do you want to say anything about either the sign or the new fire truck?
Yes.
Great. Now I can see you.
Yes. I'm live. Yeah, the new sign is up on the building. It was Janet and I chatted about something we can get better, freshed. The original sign is still in possession. It's inside the building on the upper wall. That that sign is age old. My father built that when before he first came chief. So that's very good plywood on that old.
Don't throw it away. Don't.
No, 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 I didn't. I didn't. The new sign was made in Camden. It is. Escapes me the name of the product, but it's it's the color red is kind of a plastic base, but it's better than that. It stuck to a white background and they did a very good job in sizing it just from a photo. It got installed, I think a week ago. And so we've been all fall trying to get this to happen and I'm very pleased with it. I hope the public is too.
Great, thank you.
The other little note, if I may. I gave John Janet a copy of. The plans for the new fire truck of coming. It's just delayed a week because of the weather, bad weather tomorrow. It's going to show up in the state next week, February 11th in Lincoln. In the state next week, February eleventh in Lincolnville. And I'm leaving it over there overnight for the opportunity for Waldo and Knox. Fire departments to view our new truck, and then it will be delivered Saturday morning, February twelfth. Here at the station where Islesborough Fire Department will review it. Train with it and get introduced to it, and I've got scheduled a dedication of the new truck. And that will happen February nineteenth in the station and. Posters and invites will be forthmailing. So this is an early invite for the board. To attend the dedication. It starts at eleven AM. The program is. Hour two total. And there'll be more information and I'll get that to you. A big thanks to the board for all your support. And the capital reserve every year to make this purchase happen. I believe that the board and the people of Islesborough will be very pleased with this. It's called a mini pumper. It's a smaller version of a big pump. And there's a lot of reasons why we chose this design. So that was just informational.
Great, thank you very much, Mert. Looking forward to seeing this truck when it arrives.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mert while he's here? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is to prove warrant number sixteen. Moved by Shay. Second by Melissa. Is there any discussion about warrant number sixteen? Hearing none, all in favor. Shay.
Hi.
Lauren.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Melissa.
Hi.
I also vote I. Warren is approved. It's unanimous. There's no appointments today. No chair comments today. Vice Chair comments, Shay.
My only, it's, my only comment is there's lots of. Capital projects, it seems, in the pipeline and just thinking about as we get into. The budget development process, I'm wondering kind of how it'd be nice to have. You know, keep both the short term, what do we need this year in planning, but also kind of what are. The capital needs for all of these projects down the road and our existing infrastructure too. So that's my only comment is it is it seems like having a robust conversation about that, I think would be helpful come budget time.
Yeah, and when does our first budget meet?
I think it will be March third, probably a five o'clock. You know, we were doing them five to six and then we were meeting at six fifteen. Unless you want to do something different. Want to start it earlier or? Breakfast time?
Is there a good time to start a budget meeting? I don't know. I mean, maybe we should think about that and we can discuss it at our next meeting. We've got time between now and then, so.
You said we're going to start it in March?
We we historically. Every one, well, it used to be once, every Thursdays in Mar- in March, those selectmen's meetings would begin. Now they're at five thirty. So they used to be six fifteen, then we would do the budget from five until six and have a little break. And now they start at five thirty, so I guess either we could start the budget at five. Or four thirty and then start the regular meeting at the regular time, but and on the Thursday that there's no selectmen's meeting, we still would have a. Longer time for the budget workshop. I couldn't begin at five. When you start it.
We can chew on this for another couple of weeks and try to have a discussion. Let's add it to the agenda for next year, just to have a discussion to set the. The timing of those. Lauren, do you have any comments?
No, except all of you stay warm and drive safely.
Thanks, Lauren. Melissa. No comments and Phil gets the last word tonight.
I have nothing much to say.
Nothing to say. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Phil. Is there any second to the motion to adjourn? Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Drive safe tomorrow. Yeah, it has a potential to be bad.
Are you coming here for this Zoom tomorrow? Just do it.
I think.